It's recording now. And I'm going to admit all. And now I'm going to turn off the waiting room.
Excellent. Uh, there's still two in the waiting room that I see.
Yeah, I'll go get them.
Okay. Okay, we're good?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, 7:05.
Okay, thank you. So the, um, okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Uh, the Smithfield Planning Board Virtual Meeting for Thursday, July 9th, 2020, uh, is called to order. First order of business roll call. Ms. Staples?
President.
Let's see who's that? Mr. Fournier?
Yeah.
Mr. Punchak? Sounds like no. Uh, Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Keen?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
Here.
And the chair is here. Uh, next on the agenda, we have, um, five sets of minutes we need to, uh, review and approve. So take a little time. Let's do them. We're going to do them and vote one at a time. So starting with, uh, let's start with the May 7th.
Mr. President, I, um, Rich Keen, I, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second roll call vote. Uh, oh, for the purposes of voting, Mr. Menard, uh, is a voting member with Mr. Punchak being act absent. So, uh, so Mr. Fournier?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So that's the May 7th are approved as is. Next, the, uh, May 21st minutes. Give you a few minutes to look at those.
Mr. President, uh, Rich Keen, I, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second once again. So, uh, Mr. Fournier?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. May 21st minutes are accepted as is. Uh, the minutes from May, the May 26th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the May 26th meetings as it minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Fournier. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second for Mr. Menard. Uh, Mr. Fournier, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the May 26 minutes are accepted as is. Uh, the Thursday, June 4th meeting next. Take a minute to look at that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the June 4th minutes as is.
Thank you, Mr. Fournier. Second?
Second.
Who is that who seconded? Is that Mr. Keen?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fournier, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The Thursday, June 4th minutes are accepted as is. And the last one, the Thursday, June 11th, minutes. This is the, uh, the ones, uh, the minutes for our workshop, our virtual workshop. The Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the June 11th minutes as is.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fournier. Who has the second?
Rich, Rich Keen.
Thank you. Okay, for vote, Mr. Por- uh, Mr. Fournier?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the minute for the Comprehensive Plan Workshop on June 11th are also approved as is. Thank you. So, uh, next on the agenda, uh, disclosure for, uh, this for anyone with any potential conflict on the matter before the board this evening would disclose them. Does anybody have anything to disclose in terms of a conflict?
Yes, Mr. Chair, item number six. I'm going to just continue to recuse myself of the gold project.
Okay, Mr. Fournier, thank you. That's right, you did last time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I also have to recuse myself from item number seven, the, um, preliminary application for minor subdivision plat 17 lot 127.
All right, now I'm going to make a note.
Mr. Chairman, according to order, will you have a, uh, forum with the, with the, I don't know how many people here. We have a quorum if after when one gentleman recused himself?
We, we should not have a problem. We have, um, we have six people present, present. The two people recusing themselves are recusing themselves on different, okay?
Yep, I just wanted to show I'm sorry. I don't know who's present, that's why I can't tell.
Yeah, everyone except Mr. Punchak, so we have six.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. So, uh, given that, um, the, uh, well, we'll, we'll do the next item next. Okay, so, uh, we've covered that. The next, uh, plain disclosure notice, planning board members should disclose any ex parte communications about contested or material, legitimate, facts and opinions concerning the merits of any application for the planning board this evening. Do you have, uh, anything to disclose, anyone?
Mr. President, Rich Keen?
Mr. Keen, and Mr. Keen, again, I appreciate the promotion, but I'll just take chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure Ambassador.
Your Excellency. I, um, I, um, did post something on a Facebook, uh, Engage North Smithfield, um, after subsequent to our last meeting, um, where I related, uh, the facts, uh, as I understood them that were presented at the meeting.
Okay. And that was, that was, okay, so it's through a Facebook page, okay? Any, anything, uh, you want, Mr. Chairman, is there anything, uh?
Only to make sure that, um, a copy of that information, if you can print it off and get it to the applicant, uh, under the law, the applicant would have a, if there's anything in there that the applicant wants to challenge, the applicant has to challenge it under this.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, uh, and?
And they have to have an opportunity to do that before you vote.
Okay.
I thought, I thought you had provided something via email, Mr. Keen, on, on that topic.
I, I did, and, and, uh, uh, I believe the owner of the property was also a, um, a participant in the, in the thread of the conversation, so.
I, I would just say, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that when, when the time comes to address that matter before the board, you ask the applicant if they have that information and they had adequate time to, uh, determine and or challenge it. And if they want more time, you should provide it.
Okay, will do. Uh, well, I'll, I'll join the club with Mr. Keen. I also had posted, uh, made one post on, on Facebook, uh, related to the valuation of the property of, uh, uh, you know, I think we're both talking about, uh, item six, the goal. Um, so the, I guess it's called Douglas Pike Solar. Uh, so I had that again. Mine, mine was addressing the applicant himself. It was, it was single post got the response from him, but we'll address that, I guess, when, uh, when we get to that topic. Anyone else? Okay, so hearing pardon?
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Chair, he's got a quick thing. I'm having some technical difficulties. I'm going to have to get my daughter-in-law to help me out. So you may lose me and have to let me back in, but item six is next, so I'm going to be recused anyway.
Well, um, just sit tight for a second because it may or may not be next.
Okay.
So first, let me declare the, uh, the voting and non-voting members. So for item six, which Mr. Fournier is, uh, also accusing from, so himself from with Mr. Punchak missing, Megan Staples, Ms. Staples, as well as, uh, you know, Mr. Porter, Mr. Keen, Mr. Menard and myself will be the voting members on that project. And for item seven, the, um, minor subdivision, um, on Sales Hill Road, again, Ms. Staples will be a, a voting member along with remaining, uh, with Mr. Fournier. Uh, do I have that right? Or would we have? Do I have that correct? Mr. Porter? Um, yes, because Mr. Porter, so it'd be Ms. Staples, uh, Mr. Keen, Mr. Fournier, Mr. Menard and myself will be the voting members for item seven. Then for item eight, uh, we'll be back to the complement that we have here. So it would be back to, um, Ms. Staples and Ms. And, uh, uh, being an alternate and Mr. Menard would be a, a voting member. If, if Mr. Punchak uh, does arrive late, uh, then that will make a change accordingly, uh, as we get to it. So with that, um, in, in looking at the agenda, uh, I'm wondering if it makes sense to do a little bit of rearranging.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move items number seven and eight ahead of item six on the agenda.
Well, we have a motion to move them and, you know, we're looking at them as being, uh, little less time consuming, uh, shorter topics to cover. So we have a motion to move item seven and eight to before number six. Do we have a second for that? And we have a second for Mr. Keen. So, uh, with that, Mr. Fournier, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And so for this first item, uh, which is item seven, Mr. Mr. Porter, you will be recused, correct? Thank you.
That is correct.
Okay. So for discussion, consideration and action, the preliminary application for minor subdivision, plat 17 lot 127, applicant and owner, Mr. James Carey, 111 Sales Hill Road. Applicant proposes a single lot conforming subdivision. Mr. Pl- uh, Mr. Kravitz, could you give us a little background?
Yeah, this application, like you said, is very straightforward, um, because the lots are legal, uh, conforming lots and proposed. In particular, there's a soils evaluation that was, um, confirmed by D E M for the test pits to locate a onsite wastewater treatment system, um, that could support a home, which is what's being proposed. I, I, I'm encouraging approval. I have, it's a preliminary minor application. There's no public infrastructure proposed, so there's no hearing. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking the board to, uh, to support it and I've got, I've got my preliminary, uh, decision for you drafted in the staff report.
All right. There any questions or comments from the board on this project? There's, uh, is, there, is there a public hearing to this or informational hearing? No, I didn't think so. Okay, so, um, if there are no questions or comments, then I'd say we would just, uh, put it for a board and see if we, uh, so I'd need a motion to, I guess I would ask for a motion to, uh, for approval based on the recommendation and then we'll see how the vote goes.
I'll make that motion for approval as planner has proposed.
And we have a motion for Mr. Menard to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second for Mr. Keen. Uh, so, uh, roll call vote, if I remember correctly. Ms. Staples?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, yeah, Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Mr. Fournier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So.
I would ask that, um, if the board could take another vote on whether the final plan could be submitted administratively?
Certainly.
I'll make a motion that it can be continued administratively.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Staples. Any discussion? None? Okay, so, um, Ms. Staples, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Fournier?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So that's to approve the administrative approval on that. Mr. Mr. Kravitz?
Very good.
Okay, so next item on the agenda. So with that, uh, Mr. Porter, you're rejoining us. Thank you. Um, so with that, you've become a voting member. Ms. Staples is an alternate on this item. Uh, for discussion, consideration and action, final application for major land development plot, uh, plat one lots 127, 134 and 330, uh, 1118 to 1156 Victory Highway. Applicant owner, DAS Construction Contracting Corporation, uh, 520 Old Country Road, West Tixville, New York. Applicant proposes a 120 unit assisted living and age restricted adult active community. Little background, Mr. Kravitz?
You know, this project has quite a history in town, uh, just in terms of duration. It's been going on a long time in terms of the, the planning process, um, only because of, partly due to the, the recession too of '08, I assume delayed things. But even prior to that, there was a zone change granted by the council. Um, you have the minutes on that I sent today. Um, the project consists of, uh, assisted living units and, um, senior housing, I think it's 55 and overhousing. The project effectively connects Route 102 to Main Street. It is in effect, um, tied to the Silver Pines Phase One and Phase Two projects. Uh, Silver Pines Phase One, of course, is complete. All the residents, I assume, know where that is and what that is. Uh, Phase Two will be similar in terms of the type of units. Um, and then, and then both of those projects will be on a private roadway, uh, but as I advised in my staff report, um, that roadway system should connect internally so that the residents who live in any one of these three projects can choose to go out via, uh, 102 or Main Street. I think that that's important to disperse the traffic, uh, most effectively, um, and not put all of, all the load on one road versus the other. Um, I did have a conversation with Bill Lavery, who's with us, and I, I think he, he and his client agree to that. The only other thing that's interesting with this is, uh, by way of your clock, you do have some time. You have till August 14th, I think it is, to render a final decision. Um, along those lines, I'm looking for you today to, um, give me direction as staff to craft a decision. Uh, for the 14th, which I can prepare for you to read into the record. And the only other thing with this that was, as a recent development, was I sent, uh, an email to you today with a series of attachments. Those attachments, if you look at them, uh, they basically substantiate the requirement that the project does have to provide affordable housing. And a brief conversation again with Bill on this today. And, uh, 20% of the total units, and then this can be the assisted living or the 55 and over units. Either one, I didn't stipulate which, but 20% of the total unit count between everything should be, should be deed restricted affordable. So that, that was also sent to, to, uh, the engineer Casali, uh, and, and Mr. Kirby. I, I, I got that to him. I don't know if I had a chance to look at it. I actually don't know if he's joining us or not, but when we throw it to the applicant, they can, they can address their attendance tonight, but, um, that's really all I have to say on it, Mr. Chairman. If you wanted to throw it to either Bill Lavery or others who could talk briefly about the permits that have been, that have been obtained. All the permits have been obtained really, which is, which is good for the project. The other, the other beneficial aspect of this project, which the town likes, is they're going to extend a public water line all the way from the intersection of Cumberland Farms, uh, to the site. Uh, and that, and that's good for a variety of reasons, uh, to try to enhance development along that corridor and take some of the commercial, uh, properties off of septic systems. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll leave it up to you.
Who do we have here representing the applicant?
Uh, Bill Lavery from Joe Casali Engineering. Um, I believe, uh, Richard Kirby, um, are you on the line as well? I think he might be trying to unmute.
You know, if he has a phone number, um.
Well, we're not fussy about who it is that speaks.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I can give you an update of where we are today. Um, so we received preliminary plan approval back in September 2019. Since then, we've secured our physical alteration permit with DOT, um, our freshwater wetlands permit, um, with D E M. We've been in front of the sewer subcommittee for, um, the sewer improvements and sewer capacity. Um, we went in front of the town council, um, acting in the capacity of the Water and Sewer Commission, um, for approval, um, uh, again, for our sewer capacity as well as our, um, uh, water line extension. Um, we also needed to, uh, renew or receive a new zoning approval, um, for a few dimensional variances and a special use permit that had since expired throughout the, um, the planning process. Um, so in, in, in dealing with that, we also saw, um, we were in front of the Conservation Commission for a recommendation to the zoning board. So we've been through, um, many boards and councils um, since preliminary plan and we've received approval, um, for all of those site elements. And, um, we're here now before you, um, for final plan approval. Um, in speaking with Tom, I know, um, we've, uh, achieved all of the conditions of the preliminary plan, um, and that one stipulation that was, um, uh, reviewed from the, um, one, one, sorry, one condition that was put on us, uh, for the Silver Pines, uh, sorry Slater Village project was to, um, review, uh, the Silver Pines Phase Two, uh, conditions. And in doing so, um, Tom had, uh, had saw the, one of the conditions was the affordable housing. Um, 20% affordable housing. Now, that was, um, stipulated, uh, when that approval was done in 2006, I believe. And then in 2010, um, uh, they received, uh, a zone change for the property. Um, so I know that portion of the project history is really with, um, the attorney. I'm just trying to see if he can, he can speak or get a hold of, uh, on the meeting.
I will add to that, Bill, that the affordable housing ordinance that was passed was passed in 2008. My interpretation is simply that 20% affordable is required. The one other thing while it's in my head here, I'm thinking about this, um, and I don't mean to divert subject matter from the affordable housing, but this trash, trash collection, is that going to be, that's going to be private, I assume?
That's private, um, with, uh, there's dumpsters on site and that was discussed at the zoning board hearing.
Yeah.
Um, one of the conditions, because we're in the ground over, the groundwater overlay district, was to make sure that there was coverings over the dumpsters. Um, so we've, uh, included that in the latest zoning plan and it was approved at the zoning hearing.
That's both rubbish and recycling too, right?
Correct. Uh, Tom, I think, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Kirby is under the iPad or the iPhone icon. He's saying he can't, it won't let him unmute himself.
All right, he must be the, is he the 965 number?
Yes, that's me. Hello?
There he is.
You're, you're unmuted now.
Oh, okay, I won't be using any foul language then.
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, just to, uh, recap, Richard Kirby on behalf of DAS, the prior approval for Silver Pines Phase Two, at the time of the planning board approval, on the phase two regarding the hall road, which became a connector road, uh, it was identified that we will potentially develop that property. And I believe that the last recorded, uh, Mr. Kravitz indicated in a memo today showing, uh, stipulation number five, that the, um, housing, um, would be 20% to low and moderate income housing. If that, if this property were to be developed, uh, this lot and, uh, up to 40 units, we would, uh, agree to that language that was already recorded.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the project has more than 40 units, correct?
It's 120.
Right. Just to be clear, we agree that 20% of the housing will be affordable then?
Up to the 40 units. A maximum of 40 units. So it would be 120 units, 20%, we, there's an argument that can be made to the 40 units or up to 40 units in max. We would agree to the 40 unit maximum.
Me, so, so meaning that you'll still make 24 affordable units? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just saying that essentially after 100, after 200 units, it maxes out at 40?
At one point in time, the development pri- in all candor, the development project, there was a discussion about 200 and some units going in there and it was too many units for that project.
Gotcha, okay.
One million.
That makes sense.
So, uh, this is probably a question for, for you, Mr. Kravitz. On the 20% rule, you know, obviously these, they aren't all built simultaneously, right? So not the whole place. So how does, how does the progression go? Is a developer allowed to make 20, the 20, the last 20 or not? You know, I would, I would hope that there's some progression with that because for whatever reason, projects can come to a halt, right?
It, it, I know, it's up to the board. You, you, you give direction as to what the ratio, is it one to one? Uh, for every two market rate, do you want one, one affordable? That's your call.
Could it go? Could it go per building, since there's multiple buildings?
You do it that way?
That, yeah, because it's unlikely to have an unfinished building, so that's probably a good way to do it.
What you don't want, all I know is this, what you don't want is them to build all the market rate and then you're chasing the affordables to be done. That's, you don't want to be.
Exactly, that, that was my point. So, uh, but Mr. Fournier has raised an interesting approach to that, which is per building. Make sure it meets the 20% at the building level. Um,
That might be.
What, what thoughts, uh, for the rest of the board?
Can I say on that also?
Actually, uh, you, you can, and I would ask you, uh, I would ask board members, I would ask board members to use the raise your hand function.
Okay.
And if I can find it, I can.
Yeah, I gotta find it.
I will say that if you did it by building, that would be very, uh, that would be an easy thing for us to work with the building along to monitor, you know, because this is what, when you do stuff like this, in my experience, I need to be really, uh, working with the building official who is the one giving out the permits as those projects being constructed. And they'll be able to keep a tally for us and say, you know, okay, building such and such as so many units, they'll know that 20% of them must be, be affordable. So doing it that way, actually.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Menard, I see that you had your, Mr. Menard, I see you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Fournier of, uh, going building by building and this alleviates, uh, the situation that we've had with other projects in the past where we're at the tail end and we're chasing them. This, if it should stall a third way through, then we've got our 20% of that, that ratio.
Yep, agreed. Okay, thank you. Um, and Mike's iPad, is that you, Mr. Fournier?
Possibly, yeah, probably, yes. Me, what it says on my iPad. Possibly, yeah, probably, yes. What it says on my iPad, no, because I think, you know, you don't want to be chasing them in the end. And then we also, I'm sure nobody wants all, all of the affordable in one building either. They want to be scattered out. So I think it definitely should be building by building.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yep, two, two very good reasons. Any other, any other comments? And we have a, and we have a non-verbal thumbs up from Ms. Staples, so I'm gonna...
Yeah, I think, I think Richard Kirby wanted to weigh in as well, but he seemed to be muted.
No, he does. I, I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I purposely muted Mr. Kirby, only because I don't think he can, I don't know if he can't see us, but I wanted to let the board have his discussion. Then let's go back to Mr. Kirby for his thoughts when you're ready.
I think we're ready right now.
I need to speak again.
Hi, Mr. Kirby, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak again. The 20% units normally are, under the statute, you're not allowed to distinguish between, let's say it was a condominium development, or multi, you know, small housing, you're not allowed to isolate them. However, because this was a 55 and older adult active community and an assisted living facility, our position was that in a lot of, in many instances, the assisted living facility may end up meeting the 20% or exceeding it in and of itself. We wouldn't want to be constrained that if we are exceeding 20%, that the rest of the units could be, at some point, market rate, so rented at market rate. That's the reason why.
Let me add one thing to this. Assisted living units, in order to be considered affordable, they're going to have to be certified by an affordable housing monitoring agent. So that is something I, it's possible with assisted living, correct?
Yes, and we would agree to that.
That's fine.
But, but Mr. Kirby, it sounds like what you're saying is that because of the nature of these, you're expecting the price point to come in, that many of them will qualify? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, particularly the assisted living, and the 55 and older, many retiring and things of that nature.
But, but if that's the case, then there still should be no issue following, you know, Mr. Fornier's idea of, of meeting a building by building, because as you build more buildings, in the end, you know, you're gonna have many, you're gonna far surpass the, the requirement.
Yes, I, I, what I, what I wouldn't want to have happen is this, though, that each building has a restriction on it in perpetuity at 20%, because if we are exceeding 20% with the bigger building being the assisted living facility, we would like to be able to get market rate for any another available unit on the property. That's the only reason why. I don't want to have the restriction. I, I can understand the board's concern as to the development of the project as it goes along, that there's no distinguishing element or feature of any unit on the outside as to market rate versus low and moderate income standard. However, let, if we are meeting 20%, there may be a building that could be completely market rate, just because we've already met 20% through the bigger building on the assisted living.
Doesn't that run the risk of, of that isolation thing, where you start to have too high a concentration in one building, for example?
That would be the design of the assisted living facility in and of itself anyway. I, I would, I would suggest the following, that for the time of the buildout, if you wanted to have the ratio of the buildout so that we meet 20% as we're going, fine. I just don't want to have a restriction that any and all, each and every building has to have it at 20%. It becomes very difficult to be able to market and, and the rent and, and jockey people around. If we could figure out a way, the nature of the facility being a assisted living facility, many of the people are on social security, and, and, you know, we'd be meeting your 20% that way.
Well, I, I, I think, Mr. Kravitz, maybe you could chime in on...
I, I was just gonna say, another alternative could be for every 10 building permits that are issued, two of them have to be deed restricted affordable with an affordable housing monitoring agent onboard. Just do two on every 10.
That's fine with us.
Can I weigh, could I weigh in one more time?
That makes it easy.
Hang on one, hang on one second.
I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, this is the last time I'll interrupt. That, that makes it easy for us as staff. There's an administrative burden on this now, because everything else we got going on, now we're tracking affordable housing units. That's the easiest way. It helps me in the building officials office to say, okay, Kerry, for this project, two on every 10, it's all you need to know. I need, then it's simpler.
But when you say it's two on every 10, because I just want to, let's make sure we're clear on your thought, before we take input from someone else, doesn't that still sort of go as they're being built?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Mike Fornier?
Yes. Do we know, has the developer decided, like, what building's going first? If the assisted living building is going to be the first one built, and he can get all of his affordable into that one building, I think that's kind of like, sounds almost like what he was saying, is he may be able to get all of his affordable into that one building. If he can do that, I don't see why there'd be a problem with that. But if that's the last building to be built, then it could potentially cause the other problem, where we're chasing our units.
The issue we raised with that was, we're trying to avoid, and I think Mr. Menard had brought it up also, is the isolation of, or concentration of the, the affordable units all in one building. And, you know, as Mr. Kirby had pointed out, in developments, they're, they're supposed to be distinguishable, they should be blended in, they just need to fit in with the community. So this 120-unit community needs to have them, you know, spread out within that community.
Correct.
So having them all, even in, in the assisted care building, even though all of them may meet the criteria, is not the same as two out of 10. Because I don't think there'd be enough, there won't be enough in the, in, in that one building to meet that criteria anyways, right? You would, you would have to have quite, you'd have to have quite a few units to, to meet that, to get to 24. So...
There's 140, it's 28. It's 28, but how many are in the assisted living?
The, hang on, according to this, it's a 120-unit, overall, the development is 120 units. Is that correct, Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
So that's the combination of both assisted and non-assisted living?
Correct.
Yes, so it's, it's 120 units, and therefore 24 affordable.
And it'd be 28, would be 20% of 140?
Yeah, but it's 20% of 120.
Oh, okay, I got you, all right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Menard, you have your hand up.
I'm just gonna reiterate my earlier comment about keeping it scattered for the fact that we don't have a concentration or a signifying that this building, for example, is the assisted living, or the affordable living home. It should, like you said, be blended, and I, I believe, I like Tom's idea of doing it at the building permit stage, where every 10, there are two. That really keeps control this way. If there were, for example, if there was a building that had 80 units, and they cease development at 40, for whatever reason, and occupy 40, then we still have our 20%.
Correct, yep. And, and it, and it really forces them to be blended, because any given building is not going to have enough total units to support the 24. So I think that that will achieve that, so...
Right, it also, it also keeps it, like Tom says, administratively, it just makes it a whole lot cleaner, that they're not chasing another item, that it's done. It's just a zone, and it's all set.
Excellent, good points. Mr. Porter, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in on two things. I, I'm in agreement with everybody on the percentages, but I think I just looked at the plans again, and counting off, you know, so many units per building. I was thinking that we make sure that we do, I understand that the applicant wants to provide more, but we at least provide a minimum number that is per building. So for example, Building A is 18 units, so 20% of that would be four units minimum. So then that way, with each building, we get our 20%. And then if he decides to elect to make the other 16 units scattered throughout the property, then that, that's his prerogative of whichever units he wants to see. But I think we need to identify a minimum number of units that need to be affordable in each building. My other point is, just adding up all the building, the units that are on the plan, that plan that's before us, my count is that there's 102 units total, not 120. So in Building A, it's listed as 18 units. Building D is listed as 36 units, and Buildings C and B are 24 units. So I'm just curious if there's 18 units missing, or if those plans are incorrect and just need to be corrected as such.
I can answer that. The, the plans, and this was testified previously, Building A had, per the, the zone change town council action, has the option to be, how we show it, at 36 units for 54 units. So if you do the 54 units, it's the 120. So conservatively, all of the plans and the calculations have all been done on the 120.
Okay.
That's correct. That was discussed way back at the planning meeting, yeah.
Right, okay. So, Mr. Porter, if we go with the minimum number of units per building, doesn't it basically come back to the original idea put forth by Mr. Fornier, that, that we measure it per building, as it's being built?
Yeah, I, I was afraid of the two per 10. No offense, Tom, but I was, I'm a little afraid of the two per 10.
No, I can make, I can make the other one work too, because Kerry is gonna carry the building official, obviously, the building plans, and you're saying simply, for every building, it must be affordable. That's fine.
Yeah, I think, I think as long as we set that as a minimum, that way, like, like Mr. Kirby said, he, he anticipates putting up some more, but at least that way, we have our 20% covered for each building.
Great. Ms. Staples, you have your hand up.
Jeff stole my thunder. Exactly what I was gonna say. I'd rather see, like, if we're gonna break it up by numbers, I'd rather have like a certain number dedicated for buildings. That way it's easy for Tom, and so Jeff and Roland covered it, all of it. Great job.
Yep, and, and it serves the purpose of guaranteeing that they're blended throughout the community, and, and we don't have to worry about isolation. So I think that, that does sort of, kind of kill all birds with one stone, by having that. So, Mr. Porter?
One thing that I did want to touch upon, that I haven't heard talked about in Tom's staff report, was the, the walking trail. Tom, do we, I, I know you had recommended that we also include that in our, in our approval, so I just wanted to hear you talk more about that, just to make sure that we're, I'm understanding everything completely.
Yeah, okay, so when I did some of the title search on the property for the previous approvals, one of the record drawings clearly showed the walking path, which is a good thing. It was shown on the Phase Two part of the project. And it's good for you to bring this up now, because the other thing I was gonna mention was this. One of the things I want to avoid is issuing all the COs, especially for Phase Two, which is where this walking path goes right through, and then have to have the walking path built. Because what happens is, people move in, and then they don't want a walking path. They, they think, you know, I think, I think the walking path should be there as an amenity prior to the people moving in. So how you want to deal with that, I don't know, but I think the path should be improved and present, certainly prior to COs being issued for that. I mean, that would be a good way to do it. It's an inexpensive recreational amenity. Hopefully the developer would agree.
It benefits a lot more than just that community as well, right? The people of Silver Pines and people around there, so...
It does connect to Pacheco Park.
Correct, yeah.
We will agree to that.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Ms. Staples, you still have your hand up? Is that accidental?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the, I see somebody has their hand up. Mr. Keen?
Yes, one more thing, Mr. Chair, that was mentioned in the staff report, was the roadway that, that connects all three developments, and that eventually exits out to 102 and Main Street. Tom, anything else?
No, I, I would just strongly recommend that, you know, you put private road signage at the end of each entry point, 102 and Main Street, that there should be no gate system or anything in between. I think residents should be able to disperse freely.
I agree.
Okay. Does that require a stipulation, Tom?
I think you should say it, yeah, just so it's...
Yeah, okay. Right, anything else from the board? Anything else from the applicant, Mr. Kirby?
Nothing, thank you.
We're good?
Well, I'd like to ask this, there's going to be a written decision, and I'd like to just get a top, a draft, a, a copy of the draft prior to it being reported or voted upon.
I, I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Kravitz, what else are you looking for from us in terms of guidance?
I'm really just looking for, for a vote to give me very clear direction as to draft either a positive recommendation. I'm asking for a positive recommendation, I'm not gonna be, why? It, it's a good project.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah.
At this point, we're looking for a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation.
We have, Mr. Fornier has made a motion for positive recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second. Do we need to add our condition, do we need to add our conditions to that as well?
You, you could say what the conditions as discussed, I have them. You're gonna see this to vote on it at your August meeting.
Right, the, the condition will be on it, great.
So Mike will include that, with conditions as discussed.
Thank you, and we have...
My second will reflect that as well.
Okay, so we have a second from Mr. Porter. So, roll call, vote, Mr. Fornier?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you everybody very much. I think some excellent points came out of that, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank you.
All right. So now, we will move on to our old business. And at this point, let's see, Mr. Fornier, you are recusing yourself?
Yes.
You're correct, okay, of Ms. Staples. You are stepping in as a voting member? So for discussion, consideration, and action, major land development, master plan application, and informational meeting with public input. It says, public input session was open and closed, Mr. Kravitz, could you just elaborate on that?
Yeah, at the last meeting, you had opened the informational session.
Yeah.
And it was closed. There was a motion to close the session too. And, you know, it's up to the board as to whether or not they want to reopen it.
Okay. Okay, make sure I understood that notation. So, you know, as I was saying, MAP 10 lots, 24 and 218 Douglas Pike Solar, the Gold Family Property, project involves 32 acre, nine megawatt AC solar array, 56 acres of conservation land, along with a segment of former railway right of way. Application is continued from the May 21st meeting. So, Mr. Kravitz, give us your summary, please?
Yeah, so, quite a bit of information has come in since you saw the project last. The most important of which, I think, is really the Sage Report. And, and Mr. Keen did ask for a clarification of Sage Environmental with respect to the National Heritage Area, that email I included in your, in your packet. The applicant has that, has that request, of course, they accommodated that. For, for this project... For for this project. What I did was because of the fact that you're kind of at the end of the uh approval timeframe, this is master plan. Okay, so for the public's benefit. You 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 have to make a decision tonight unless the developer uh the applicant grants you more time, okay? So that's something you play by ear. Maybe you could ask the the applicant that, but but as far as the process. There's gonna be another, there's another application. There's the preliminary application. Should this go forward? Someone's ringing. Let me just mute that ring.
Nope.
So. You know, and and at the preliminary application stage, of course, an official public hearing is conducted yet again. If it does move forward, the public would be notified again, so we'll see. So what I did was I I crafted two decisions. One's a positive and one's a negative. I did that because I didn't want to get to this meeting and have this board scrambling to to make a decision, okay? So I got you off on a, I set I set you in motion there, so you have those. The 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 applicant has them. I emailed them to John Mancini and and others there. Uh, so that's just so we're all prepared and and everybody is uh ready to go. I mean. With that, I'll just throw it to you, Mister Chair, probably the applicant or however you want to.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do, I see Mister Mancini is here. Um, if if you were here for the beginning of the meeting, um both Mister Keen and I. Uh disclose some ex parte communications regarding this project. So the first order of business is to ask you uh whether uh you're comfortable with what happens us moving forward? Or do you have anything to add along those lines?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. No, we we don't have any issues. We're we're comfortable with uh with you moving forward as well as Mister Keen. Um, so we're not asking for any uh recusal at this point of yourself or Mister Keen.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so as Mister Kravitz said, um. I'll I'll give you the floor to uh.
Can I pipe up just for a minute?
Oh, certainly, Mister Porter, sorry.
Um, for myself personally, I would feel much better if any correspondence, the ex parte communications. Has been relayed to the applicant for their review before we make any decisions regarding this application. I think we need to make sure that they have all the information in front of them. As uh we have all of the information in front of us. I think that's the only fair thing to do in this uh in this.
Right.
Time.
Uh, and that's a good point. I I had provided. My documentation to the solicitor. I don't know uh and and to uh the planner, so I don't know if that was. Forwarded to the applicant. And I'm I'm unaware of what documentation was provided, perhaps by Mister Keen. I know he sent an email, I think, to uh. Some of us on the board, at least the planner and myself, but I don't know what was provided. Maybe uh Mister Kravitz or Mister Igliozzi, could you comment on that? Am I anything was shared with? The applicant already?
You know, I I only forwarded to John anything that I felt was material to the actual application as it was discussed before this board. Um, I I cannot recall if I was able to gather Facebook discussions and and get them to John.
Well, no, it was the well, the one I I provided my own. And I believe I copied you on it, but I I Mister Igliozzi had asked me to send along to him, so I did. And I believe Mister Keen did the same, where basically we just, I think you just taken either a copy paste or a. Uh, a screenshot directly from the Facebook uh page to show what was submitted. Uh, so I'll ask the solicitor, Mister Igliozzi, did you provide any of that to Mister Mancini or?
Well, I did not, and I would not. That would.
Okay.
We never provide information outside uh the planning process.
Gotcha.
Everything that goes, everything that's got to do with the application goes through the planning process to the public and to the applicant.
Right. So so we have that information.
Mister Mancini familiar with that and does he have anything to respond to it? If he feels that there's no response, then that's his right. The only, the law just requires us to give him an opportunity. To be advised of the information and if an opportunity to respond. It's not a recusal issue. It's an opportunity for him to respond.
So to Mister Porter's uh topic that he raised, though, saying that. This information should be shared with them prior to moving along with the conversation. Are are you saying it's up to the applicant to decide whether they want that information or not?
I well, I think you need to disclose the information to the applicant. And the applicant has an opportunity. Mister Mancini can make a decision with the he needs time to respond now. Again, if he hasn't seen it, uh you know, and he, you know, it's it, you know, the ball's kind of in his court if today's the deadline for a vote. Unless we have more time. We can have it. Mister Mancini wants to agree to an extension.
Mister Kravitz?
I I was gonna just say that it really only matters if the planning board is uh. Is is basing their decision on a discussion they might have had on Facebook. If that's the case, then it should definitely go to Mister Mancini.
Yeah, that so I can speak only for myself. It's certainly not the case. This I just uh, you know, communicated with the applicant and he responded and. I was, I got a little education and then that was good.
Personally, guys, I I would feel a lot more com- I don't know what the timeframe is when we have to make our deadline. But regardless of what was said on Facebook, I feel that that just needs to be. Given to the applicant regardless of what was said, because I don't want to be making any decisions and then having it come back to us. Because something was missed in that disclosure or the ex parte communications. I I had, I don't doubt you guys in the least that this will have any bearing on your your ability to remain impartial. But I also want to make sure that we have the ability to remain impartial. And that we give the applicant and the public the information that's been said. Whether or not it has, you know, it's also the perception of this. It could be completely, you guys could have been talking about how the weather was on Facebook and. I don't want this to come back and bite us. That that's that's my biggest concern. And if we have another week or two to make a final decision so that we can get the information to Mister Mancini and the applicant. Then let's take that time to make sure that we are doing everything. By the book, regardless of Mister Mancini feels the need to respond to it. Or if he's comfortable with us responding to tonight. I am not comfortable voting tonight. I will say that right out. I'm not comfortable at all.
And um, so Mister Kravitz, I want you to know, I I did just forward to you via email. The correspondence that had my communication with him, so if you could, I don't have Mister Mancini's email address, so if you could forward that to him. Uh, I'd appreciate it, and it looks like Mister Keen, you have your hand up.
Yes, um. I'm I'm not sure if this will satisfy Mister Porter's concerns, but. Um, I intend to to publicly state at this meeting, everything that I stated on that on that Facebook page uh post. Um, and more, so uh. I I don't know if that helps uh Mister Porter or not, but uh.
Well.
It's nothing, you know, it was it was a social, it was posted on social media and publicly available to everybody. But you know, if Mister Mancini wants to to extend the timeline, I'm I'm more than than happy to, you know, put this off. It's.
So um with with having said that, and I'll I'll ask Mister Porter, if Mister Keen was to read it verbatim. Would that satisfy your concern?
The thing with Facebook is that it's very difficult to. Understand the context. I I under, I appreciate Mister Keen's offer to read off everything that he he stated. But there's a whole dialogue that goes on on Facebook for for my understanding. There there's the comments from other people. So even if Mister Keen were to read only his comments, we're not getting the additional comments. From other people that could have swayed Mister Keen or yourself, Mister Mister Chairman, to say another thing. It's a very. Steep hill that we've gone down and.
Yeah.
Again, I I'm, I I appreciate the offer to read off the comments, but the. The perception and the context is not there and I I. I can't bring myself to 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 uh.
Fair enough.
To to forward in good conscience, because I really, I think this becomes a very big liability for us.
Just 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 to clarify the the, what I sent to uh Mister Igliozzi and now to the. Planner to forward to Mister Mancini actually is the entire context. It it's was initiated by me, responded by the applicant. And there was a like a thank you response from me, so it is the entire conversation. And that is available, but again, with Mister Keen's, that may not be the case, so your your point is.
The other, the other thing, Mister Chairman, is I haven't seen it either. I haven't, I haven't seen what was written. I I don't believe the rest of the board has seen what was written, so they can't, we can't take that into context either. So while I appreciate you just forwarding it to Tom, so he can forward it to Mister Mancini. The rest of the group has not seen it and the rest of the public has not seen it, so. Again. I hate to waste everybody's time, but I.
Try it.
I haven't, I haven't heard an answer for when we need to make an absolute decision by.
You needed to make a decision on July, on July second.
Okay.
And that meeting was agreed, as you saw in the letters in your packet.
Right.
We we agreed to put it to the ninth. Now, technology affording us the ability to do what we can do. I already forwarded Mister Polari's email to John. I don't know if he's looking at it, but. You know, this is up to Mister Mancini. If he wants a vote tonight, you gotta give him one tonight.
And and Tom, I would ask you therefore to also forward to the other planning board members.
Oh, yeah.
Just for completeness, uh and I see that Mister Menard, you have your hand up for a while.
I'm just gonna reiterate what Mister Porter is saying that, you know. We're we're going by and and I'm not saying that somebody's leaving something out, but I know that sometimes during conversation, if it's a written thing. Seeing it in writing is it's factual and 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 it's not taken out of. The wrong way, so I think without everybody seeing it in print. Uh, doesn't allow us to really go forward, so.
You'll have momentarily, at least uh mine, so. And and certainly you should take the time to look at it, and if you feel it's not complete.
I'll leave this and not leave the meeting and look at my emails, so.
I mean, the the other question that I could, that we could pose to Mister Mancini is. Could you give us another week so we can review all the evidence at hand? He can have a chance to review everything and then we just make a decision next week. Um, I think that would probably, I've already stated how uncomfortable I am with this. So I think the next step is we should uh ask the applicant if they're.
Yep.
Okay with uh extending the timeline by one week, so we.
That's fair.
Next week.
I'm fine. Mister Mancini, would you like to chime in?
And unmute.
Give me.
Okay, there you are.
In there. Okay, so I I did get Mister Kravitz's email, so I I I think I follow um although. Just so I understand, so is the issue the Facebook post? The discussion between the Burville Land Trust and Richard Keen and and David Gold?
Uh, that's one of them, and also the one that I for uh that that came from me, which was uh regarding the. Uh, the 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 gravel, the impact of the gravel on the valuation of the property. So there was one in, that's a smaller one, probably.
Okay, I mean, I I I didn't see that, but he here's the issue that we're facing. Um, you know, there's a deadline of July second. We agreed to extend it to July ninth. In doing so, we also agreed to pay for notice to renotice, and we went one step above and beyond. Where we provided notice by certified mail the first time, and then we did it again the second time. Uh, in an informational meeting, we don't need to do that. Um, as you are very much aware, this is a a large project. It involves a significant amount of players. Uh, and there's some time constraints that we have that we have to meet in order to make it work. Uh, and we've, we're up against those deadlines and we still have a ways to go. Uh, if this project is approved, it's proved conditionally, subject to a special use permit. We'd have to go to the zoning board to get that special use permit, and then we'd have to come back to this board for preliminary plan. That and especially given the circumstances at this point, which are unknown concerning COVID and concerning when those meeting times will be and how they will operate. And what may or may not happen in the next six to nine, six to nine months. Um, timing is of an of an issue. So you put the applicant in a in a very difficult box, because we want to give you the the time that you need to make your decision. But we've also worked very hard since our last meeting to give you a lot of information that you've asked for, to also coordinate and provide for the site walk. These are procedural issues that are not of the applicant's control. It's not that the applicant was out there disseminating information through Facebook or social media. I I don't do that and my applicant applicants don't do that. My engineers don't do that. It's just not something that we we do. We 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 keep our information for the and and I'm sorry, we direct our information to the to the municipalities, to the town. The town can disseminate that information how they want to. So if the planning board think it's thinks it's a, it's a, it's an eternal issue for the planning board. If they believe that disseminating information to the public. By way of social media is one of the options that the town utilizes in order to get the public informed. I'm okay with that. That that's that's your prerogative. This is not necessarily ex parte, because you don't have. You know, you're not violating the Open Meetings Act and you're not having discussions among yourselves. Uh, it looks like what you're doing is relaying information and facts to the public. Uh, and if this is the same information and facts that you would relay this evening, I I don't have, I don't have a a a issue with that. But.
Mister Mancini, if I could, one thing you said, the applicant actually is a very active. And I'm assuming Mister Gold is the applicant.
He's Mister Gold, Mister Gold is not the applicant. Mister Gold is the is the property owner. The app, the applicant is is round renewable solar energy, so Mister Mister Gold. Doesn't even control the property at this point. The property is controlled by the applicant by what agreements. Um, so he's the owner and and obviously he's gonna have his opinion and he can do what he does. Um, but he's not involved in the in the in the development of the property. That's the applicant before you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
But under state law, he's the 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 owner is required to sign the application, so that's why it's owner applicant. But. I I, you know, if we if we can have a meeting next week, is is that the uh? What 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 I what I could do is if we can go forward this evening and and I'll I'll give you the opportunity. To hear our presentation and delay the vote to next week. I I don't, I don't see a prejudicial effect to that.
Uh, Mister Porter, Mister Menard, you you were the two most vocal. What do you say to that?
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Okay.
It is so long as the information is disseminated to the applicant, all parties of the applicant. To the, it's it's published, so it's part of the record, just so that it's out there, people understand the context. I I'm I'm much more comfortable with that. I I certainly don't mind giving them the time to give their presentation tonight, and then if if Mister Mancini is agreeable to making a decision next week. Then um I I suggest we have, we uh after his presentation will motion to continue the the meeting till the following week.
Okay, Mister Menard, you had also voiced concern. You good with that?
Yes, I agree with Mister Porter on that. This way, we're not um. We're giving courtesy to the people that were prepared to give presentation and any testimony this evening. And not delaying any of their process other than them getting the vote until we have that other information.
Right. And and also consideration of the, you know, all the people who are uh listening in, all the residents that are interested in this project, so. So with that, uh I think we'll move on with the with the presentation portion. Mister Mancini?
Yeah, uh absolutely. Thank you, Mister Chairman, for the record. Uh, John Mancini representing the applicant and the owner in regards to the. Project for you identified as map ten lots twenty-four two and two eighteen. Were before the board for a major land development project conditional, where and we're, we're asking the board for a conditional master plan approval. Along with a recommendation for the special use permit being sought by this by the town zoning board. Uh, at the last hearing, there were several questions that the um board members had. We have since that time giving you some additional information. I do have tonight with me Nicole from Sage, uh Dave Russo from Dupree Engineering, Scott Rabidu, along with um Kevin, our our landscape architect. Some some changes and some some uh some new information in respect to the uh plan since our last meeting. Uh, the owner of the property uh has been has been willing to make available. Additional acreage and the applicant has been able to put that acreage under contract, and that's specifically Assessor's Platte. Ten lot two fifty-four and uh Assessor's Platte ten lot one oh two, one ten, one oh five. Lot seven and seventeen and lot eight. So as a result of gaining those lots, the applicant is also proposing to provide that to. So as a result of gaining those lots, the applicant is also proposing to provide that to the town. So the application before you is that the applicant would deed the property to the town and in turn would obtain a portion of that property for the development of a nine megawatt solar project. The term of that would be by way of a lease agreement and it would be a 25-year lease with a one five-year option. So the totality of it would be 30 years. We're also proposing specific plans with regards to a rest, with restoration of certain trails. And Mr. Russo will walk the board through the details of that and some of the changes to the plan and how the additional area also gets added to the plan and how that gets, becomes incorporated. Since our last meeting, we also did at the request of the planning board, provide for a site walk and we're able to do that. And I think Mr. Russo will speak more to that. We also have supplemented the environmental report prepared by Mr. Rabidu. He's available to speak to that as well tonight, as is Nicole Malafani from Sage Engineering. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any specifics, I'd like to go right to it and have Mr. Russo present the plan, walk through some of the changes and some of the comments that we've made since the, since our last meeting.
No, please proceed.
Hi, good evening. This is David Russo, a professional engineer with Dupree Engineering. I'm going to walk through just some of the members or in some of the public. We're at the site walk that we went to. And the trails that we walked, we walked into the site through the railroad track. And then we walked down through the wetland area. And then up towards the field. Tom, do you have the plan that you could share?
I was going to ask, I'm comfortable doing this. Can I make David a co-host and he could show the plans himself? Is that better for you, David?
I could share mine, yep.
Is it, I'm going to do that.
Please do. That works out well because then if he's describing an area, he can use his arrow.
Yeah, yeah, and everybody can see it then.
That works well and other, that's worked well for me in other meetings.
Likewise, is Nicole, does she have the ability to do this as well? And Mr. Rabidu? I'm fine making everyone the co-host there on their team. That's easier.
Yes, that's fine by me. This is Nicole Malafani.
I have no graphics, anything I have Nicole or Dave would have, so they could put them up.
Okay, we're all set.
Can you see the PDF in front of you?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, great.
So the, the site walk that we had, some of the members parked along Maddity Road in this area. I assume you can see my cursor, correct?
Right.
Okay. We parked here and then we congregated in this spot. And we walked down the railroad bed in this area. And then we walked up and generally in this area down a trail that got us, this is where the piggery was and the old foundations and the old stone walls. And that brought us up into the open field area, which was in this area. And the cemetery was located right there, which we walked around and viewed. We then walked up this trail towards the limit of the trail, towards this property. And then we walked back through this open field area and we crossed through this wetland area. And then we walked on this trail. And this trail here, when we, assuming we get to the next stage, we're going to complete a survey of this property. And we're going to locate these trails more accurately and do a topographic survey. Our intent is to save this trail, I believe it was Karen's Way, I believe it was called. Save most of this trail. In here, it gets pretty steep down to the wetland area. There's some pine trees in this area that we're going to try to preserve. So we may end up having to pull the solar back in this area, depending on how the survey comes out. This area up here, it starts to flatten out. It's a lot less steep than here. So we're looking at relocating that trail around the solar in this area. And then that existing trail will tie back into it. And that brings us up to the peninsula area, which we walked down to the waterfront. We looped back. This is the area with the historic, two historic sites. And then we walked out back here. What we're proposing to do, because the trails that we walked out in the middle are where the solar field is located, is we're looking at potentially putting a trail along the property line here. And then coming down the side of the property and connecting back to the railroad bed. And that leads you to the Simpkins properties here. And then this leads you all the way back to the entrance area. And there's some additional trails that we didn't walk, which are shown in green scattered through the wetland areas. There's some up here also. And in between the trails and the solar array and the fence, these are areas that large trees are going to have to be removed for shade cast on the solar. We're going to have to work with the landscape architect very closely in these areas to enhance these with landscaping and grading to create more of an aesthetic view in these areas. This area up here, a lot of this vegetation will probably be selectively cut due to the topography. We may be able to leave it. Again, it's hard to determine that until we do the survey and get into the engineering of the property. As stated by Mr. Mancini, the owner of the property has offered additional land as part of the deal with the town. And the original conservation area that we had shown was this in red, which was 56 point, 56 acres. And the total area of the site is approximately 124.7 acres. Of this 56 acres, approximately 31.4 acres is upland. There was a plan that we did not create, but it was posted on the planning boards page. My stamp and license is on that, but I didn't create it and it has some errors on it. The wetland area that was digitized has some incorrect areas. There's an area over here that shows up as wetland and it's not wetland. There's another area here on that plan that shows up as wetland and it's not wetland, it's upland area. So there are some inconsistencies on that plan and it shows a larger wetland area that's, then that's what's in the field. So the, the owner of the property has offered an additional approximately 20 acres. We have shown that the 20-acre additional land. It's this parcel here, Lake Bel Air. There's another parcel here. And then you have the remaining railroad bed to the east. And then you have Douglas Pike. And there's a property in between here, but then there's another Bel Air piece further east. The other thing that we wanted the board to be aware of is that the 56 acres of conservation area that we had shown here, it didn't include this upland trail area along the south. That's another two acres that wasn't accounted for. We didn't account for any trail areas inside the development area. Those will essentially be part of the conservation area once this solar field's done or completed because you're going to have trails and you're going to have landscaping outside the fence area. So there is additional conservation area that'll get added to that. Again, though, with no survey and no engineering to quantify, that number is really difficult. So we're just using real approximate values at this point, but there's, you know, there was originally 56 acres of conservation area. With this additional 20 acres, it's now up to roughly 76 acres of conservation area being proposed at this time. And those are, in summary, the changes or additional information that we've had since the last meeting.
I just have a question for you on the, on you saying the wetlands areas. When you're talking about the wetlands and uplands, is this based on how DEM has evaluated the site?
This has not, has not gone to DEM yet. We have flagged wetlands, all the wetlands shown with the red markers in the numbering.
But it's wet, it's wetlands as, as you have defined it. I mean, the final say is DEMs as to what, what exactly constitutes wetlands or not, correct?
Correct. And we wouldn't know that till we get to that stage. That's correct.
But that would be part of the next stage.
That's correct.
Okay. One other question for the next stage, would there be, there should not be, I guess I'll say, any cutting of trees or any of that to, to accommodate the study?
There shouldn't be. The only physical work on the ground that we typically do prior to any engineering design is we typically will have a excavator on site to dig some exploratory test holes. Their intent when they go out there is not to knock down trees. So, I mean, they'll, they'll run a machine through the property, but with the trail system out here, I imagine they're not going to have to, you know, knock down too many trees in that process.
Not too many.
Well, I mean, like, I mean, they're not going out there to clear trees. They're not going to clear cut trees.
I mean, if they're using a small enough excavator, it can fit on the,
Exactly.
Fit on the trails and then. All right. Because, I mean, once you start altering the site, you're altering the site toward a project that hasn't been approved, so. We have some experience with that, so. All right. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I was going to wait to see if there was more comments from the rest of the applicant team.
Okay.
Yeah. So if there's no further questions to Mr. Russo, what I'd like to do, one of the things that the board had asked us to do is look at some landscaping, specifically in regards to some of the abutters and also concerning the array and buffering from the array. And then from the site walk, we also had a discussion regarding how to buffer the array from the trails so that the, those that are utilizing the trails don't see the array. And with that, I just want to have Kevin Alveson, who's our landscape architect, kind of fill the board in as to the happening since our last meeting.
Hi, thank you very much, John. I, since the last meeting, unfortunately I wasn't able to be there for the site, for the site walk. But I have, as I testified at the previous hearing, I have walked the site on a number of occasions. The, Tom, would I be able to perhaps share my screen as well?
I just, I just asked you, you should have gotten the thing asking you to, you are a co-host now, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me try this here. Can, can everybody see my cursor?
Yes.
Excellent.
I can.
So as I had stated at the previous hearing, I had a chance to review the site in both full leaf cover as well as no leaf cover in the winter of last, of last year. And as you had, members that were able to go to the site walk had seen, in particular, our focus for, our initial focus on the buffering certainly was along the southern border of the site, where it's abutting directly to residences. The further you are towards the east of the site, there's significant topographic changes, some birmingham along the north edge of the existing rail bed trail as well as some mature vegetation and also significant saplings of white pines and things that, that, that does really obscure the project area from a visual standpoint from the residences. That coupled with the residences being set so far back from the properties. However, our main concern when we were out here initially looking at the site was further towards the western end of the site where we don't have that topography and the vegetation is, is much sparser. And so, so that is an area that we certainly will need to address as far as buffering additional planting supplemental vegetation. We have actually met with Land Abutter of AP 10 lot 15 to specifically go out there and review it, not just from a visual standpoint, but as you can see from the aerial photography, the site is the backyard of lot 15 and in our site, there's very little vegetation. And not just from a visual standpoint, from the, the look of the solar array, or I should say obscuring the look of the solar array. The concern from the landowner was with the fact that this is now a public, well, potentially a public trail, that his lot becomes very visible for people who are just using the trail. So we wanted to be able to, to work with the landowner to come up with some strategies to be able to sufficiently buffer that component of it. We had some discussions out on the site about some additional fencing, additional plantings. I think we are moving in the right direction as to, as to what the ultimate buffering design in that area will be. And certainly we'll plan to, should we, should we move to the next phase? Once we start looking at the engineering to the site, really start analyzing that much closer and working with the landowner. We've also reached out, although we haven't made contact yet. We have reached out to the other landowners along the south property line. This is a lot 151. There's really four main lots here. So lot 151, lot 136 and lot 161. We have reached out and our intent is that we will be also hopefully able to have that, that, that site meeting with them to discuss any of their particular concerns that may arise from it. I've had multiple conversations internally with the, with the team, particularly with the project engineer, Mr. Russo. One of our, our other focus areas when it comes to the buffering strategies and design, as Mr. Mancini has just alluded to, is with regard to the trails and being the existing trails that are remaining as well as the supplemental trails that will be adding to, to ensure sort of a connection of the loop around the project site. That when we get into the engineering of the site, we'll be looking at, at using topography, some natural birmingham, some lower understory plantings, a variety of native understory plants, shrubs, berry bearing vegetation, things that's good habitat, but things that will work with what the, what the existing ecosystem is that's out here. So there's, when, when the survey of the land and the topography is really refined, that's really where the lion's share of that work is going to come into play. But to rest assured that we are, we're sensitive to that. And not just from the abutters standpoint, but the fact that this will be hopefully a public resource that members of the community can use. That, that the trails will be, will retain that natural feel to it. The, the real design of this, again, will have to come once we get into the engineering and grading, figure out where drainage will be going, exactly where fence lines will be going, et cetera. So I don't know if there are any, any particular additional questions that I might be able to answer. I'm happy to.
Anything from the board? No, I think there, is there another presenter?
There is, there is, Mr. Chairman. There's two other, two additional presenters. But on the point of landscaping, we're, we are committed to, to have preliminary ensuring that the abutters specifically, it's lot 161, Mr. Simpkins, is given the plan and an opportunity to provide input with regards to the landscaping. Our team has already met with the abutter, met with the abutter and we're willing to continue that process throughout this process right into the zoning board and then back here at preliminary. So we're committed to do that. We're committed to the buffering and the screening. And we don't have an issue if the board would want a conditioned master plan approval on, on that commitment. So we're okay with that. So moving on, Mr. Chairman.
I do, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mancini. I see that Mr. Keen has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, in regards to the buffering, I'm concerned that in other solar projects, when you show the solar array, outside of the solar array, as you indicated, you want to, you want to cut away vegetation to allow for maximum sunshine on the, on the solar panels. So my, my question is, and what I'd like to see is if possible, and you mentioned berry, berry bushes, is if there could be kind of a transition from, from your solar array through that, through that low vegetation area with berry bearing bushes and, bushes and, and and then build up to smaller trees like, like maybe eastern cedar type that don't grow that tall, and then in the transition from that into the, the higher trees in the woodland. Is that something that, that you folks would be able to do?
So, so if I may, I, I agree. That would be the intent to create transitional spaces. So, really with buffering design, feeling the most effective way from a visual standpoint, but also from a habitat standpoint, is to create that layering process. So, to work from the higher woodland to the understory trees, to larger shrubs, all the way down to that, that herbaceous sort of duff layer and, and herbaceous vegetation. That creates the maximum habitat for, say, birds of prey who are looking for roosting areas and, and hunting. It provides grounds, habitat for smaller mammals, smaller birds. So, so yes, that, that would be the intent is to, to really try to recreate the, the borderlands of what the, the natural forest would be using native plants as best, to the best of our ability out there. Also, you know, we, we understand that there's also, you know, issues certainly with, you know, deer and everything else. So, you know, we know how much they love arbor buddies. So, being able to have a nice mixture of a deciduous as well as evergreen population of plants in that area is probably going to be the most effective from, from that standpoint as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mancini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, we'd like to hear from Nicole for Sage Engineering. She's also been involved in, in a lot of the environmental issues concerning the property that the board has requested some information from.
Hi, this is Nicole Milaneti with Sage Environmental, a registered professional engineer in Rhode Island. After the May 21st, any board meeting, there were some follow-up questions that are part from that. One of them being on the archaeological study that was done at the site in 1996. The, the evaluation was done by Powell. The title of it is "A Rare Look Into Rhode Island's Upland Interior in an Archaeological Survey of the Gold Farm in North Smithfield, Rhode Island." And the owner of the property, David Gold, has, has made that available if anybody would like to go to his house to, to read it. I've read the study in its entirety, as well as reached out to Powell to ask them to provide a summary of this report so that we could share it with the public. And that is some of the information that is currently up there for, for the public and then for the board to see. Some of the, the highlights are, which are in that, that summary are there's two Native American sites, and I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see the screen? Disregard this gray area. This is a, an image from a previous earlier evaluation of where solar panels may be. I'm using this just to represent the location of where these archaeological sites are located. So, RI 2141 and RI 2142 are the Native American sites that were found back in 1996. They're small, relatively small sites, but they did find lithic chipping debris. So, so stone tools as well as stem projectile points, so such as arrowheads. They were in the wetland margins of Tarkil Pond. They date back to approximately 1,000 to 3,000 B.C. Some other things that were noted in the report is the, the swiney as well as the cemetery. And they marked that the cemetery is, is important because it, it has the remains of early settlers for the, the region. And that there's 39 marked graves in this area. It, it highlights that, there really highlights that the site contributes information to the history of prehistoric and historic occupation in Rhode Island. And so, all these areas that are of archaeological significance are areas that are not part of the development. They're actually part of the conservation area that will be left with the town. So, that means that at some point, the, the public would have access to these. They are within the 500-foot buffer for, from the, any of the solar development. So, they are some distance from any of those activities. Another thing that was asked upon was looking at reforestation at the completion. I'm not going to go into great details on this. We can save that for when, you know, when preliminary happens. But we did look at where the solar equipment would be placed and where tree clearings would be occurring and evaluated what the cost would be and what type of trees would go there. This was prepared by Land Management Services, Mark Tremblay, who conducted the forest assessment. So, he used information on what's currently there to evaluate what would be there and put together estimates on cost that would, that includes the seedlings and the shrubs and the tree tubes and the stakes and the ties and the labor equipment and all the overhead that's associated with that. So, that's another piece of information that was shared with the planning board and the, and the public, something to, to go in at the end of. So, this would be 20 years, 30 years from now when the solar is no longer used for the land and it's ready to, to go back to, to just being forested area. Another aspect of it, and I'm not going to get into details because we have Scott Rabidu here from NRS, but he evaluated the, and compared the wildlife and wildlife habitat of the conservation area that is currently there to the conservation area that will, we're proposing. And I'll let him get into the, to the specifics on, on that. But before handing over to Mr. Rabidu, does anybody have any questions on the archaeological survey or reforestation?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to ask a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Keen.
Yes, I, I would, I would very much like to have a copy of, of that complete report if this project is approved.
So, in speaking with the attorney for the landowner, he had stated, Mr. Gold stated that approvals of this, of the, the project, he would make it available to be in the libraries so that it can be accessible to the public.
That's fair. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that, we can move to Mr. Rabidu.
That would be fine.
Hello, everybody. I'm Scott Rabidu. I've been before you before. I'm a wetland biologist with Natural Resource Services. And Nicole brought up the, the graphic, which is basically part of my original report and the addendum that I was asked to do, which I believe you have. It was dated June 17th. And, and basically, I was asked to compare the habitat values of the existing conservation area, which is that triangular shaped area, and which is 10 acres in size, with the proposed 56-acre conservation area, which is what's crosshatched along the northern portion of the property. Simply put, the 10-acre area is primarily upland forest that consists of oak and pine. The area is very, you've walked it, you know, it's a very nice upland forest. The proposed conservation area obviously is much larger in size at 56 acres. But the, the orangish color is basically the same habitat type that, that we identified back in October of 2019. So, you're getting 17 acres instead of 10 acres of the same habitat type with the, with the proposed conservation easement area. The, the other important thing is that you're getting the shoreline along Tarkil Pond. I think there's over 800 linear feet of shoreline there. Some of the natural heritage areas that were identified in this portion of North Smithfield have to do with a damsel fly, you know, that, that inhabits Tarkil Pond. So, protecting that shoreline from my perspective is, is a much better conservation use, to be able to protect that shoreline with the conservation easement. And finally, you're creating a linear corridor across the entirety of the northern portion of the property, which is very consistent with 5.768 of your planning board regulations, where you look to, you know, make sure there are minimal impacts to accessways for fauna, you know, to be able to transit across properties and minimize the, the amount of habitat fragmentation. So, you know, it was a, it was a three-page addendum that I wrote, and those were the three basic conclusions. The proposed area provides, provides more overall land. It provides more forested habitat of the same quality that the current area has. It preserves the shoreline of Tarkil Pond, and it preserves a linear corridor along the entirety of the northern portion of the property. Gladly answer any questions.
Mr. Mancini, is this the conclusion of, of the presentation portion?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question?
Certainly.
Mr. Rabidu. Well, one thing for you, and then I, I guess an observation. There's, there's, there's been concern expressed that, that the conservation area that we're getting is not as valuable as the conservation area that we're giving up. Now, you just stated that the area that we're getting is larger and just, just as good. As of, I, I started on the conservation commission years ago, and it was, it was my feeling that, that that wetlands were actually more important to conserve than, than the uplands. And I was just wondering, you know, in terms of the diversity of, of, of wildlife and fauna, is there, are they equal, or is, is one arguably more valuable than the other?
Well, one of the reasons why we have a freshwater wetlands protection act is because of wildlife habitat. Wetland areas are far superior in terms of their potential to provide for individual species and a diversity of species of wildlife. And, and again, I think, you know, if I didn't state this, one of the most compelling reasons for preserving the proposed conservation easement area, in addition to the wetlands, but the wetlands are regulated anyway. You know, and I, and I stated that in my report. I mean, they're regulated by D E M, and development of wetlands is, is very limited. But the D E M only applies a 50-foot perimeter wetland to the shoreline of Tarkil Pond. And the, the interior portions from 50 feet landward, you know, could be developed. They, they could be utilized for, for any purpose. And, you know, in this case, maybe even, even for solar panels. The pres, the preservation of that shoreline and the ability for North Smithfield to have that shoreline in conservation, I believe, is very valuable. And that value is greater than the 10-acre upland forested piece, just, just that component alone, to be able to have that shoreline preserved. And that goes to the diversity of habitat. As I stated, there's a, one of the animals that was listed in the natural heritage program for potentially inhabiting this area is the scarlet blewet, and it's a damsel fly, like a dragonfly. And, you know, it's, it, it's been seen on Tarkil Pond. So, when you're preserving the shoreline, you're preserving the, the natural heritage habitat for that species to be able to, to continue to thrive there if, if they are present or survive there if they are present. And I think the addition of Bel Air Pond, I didn't, I didn't speak to that because I just found out about that. But the other natural heritage area was for Bel Air Pond, and that was for the hog-nosed snake. And so, preserving that area also preserves the habitat that was at one time identified for the hog-nosed snake, which is, again, one of our species of concern. So, if I answered your question, yes, the wetlands are very valuable for wildlife. They are protected already, and, and I think getting 17 acres of, of comparable upland forest is a plus. Getting the addition of the access to the Tarkil Pond shoreline and preserving that entire shoreline is also a plus, and, and it improves the value of the conservation easement area from the existing one.
Thank you, Mr. Rabidu. Mr. Chair, just, just a follow-up on that. At the last meeting, when the, when we were, when conversation was taking place about the, the existing conservation easement, my big concern and what there was, that that was established because of some sort of endangered species that was, that was in the area. But in, in looking, doing some research on this, it's apparent that, that, that piece of property was, was owned by the town, the town gained ownership of the property through a, through a tax sale. Someone didn't pay their taxes on it. And apparently, Mr. Gold and his wife, who are avid, avid horsemen, wanted to buy that property to build the extensive system of trails in there for the, for horseback riding. So, and this, I believe Mr. Rabidu's report kind of, kind of backs it up. There's nothing endangered in there. So, I, I think the, I think the swap of 10 acres of, of the conservation easement for what's arguably more valuable uplands and, and wetlands is, is well worth that exchange. So, I just wanted to offer that.
Mr. Keen, I just have a question. You said you did some research to find this. Is that article or articles, you know, the, the material you found that gave you that information, has that been shared with the board?
I, I believe the, the, Mr. Kravitz shared that information with us, I think, yesterday, today. It's in the lease.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. It's in the, the land purchase agreement that.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it was in something, if it's something we just received, that's fine. I just want to make sure it was documented. So. But we're, we're, at least some of the board was waiting for the end of the presentation before asking questions. That's why I asked Mr. Mancini if we're, if we're done the presentation portion, then, then I think other board members would like to ask questions.
Mr. Chairman, we are complete. I just, there's one more additional information that I know the board had requested at the last hearing. And then that's about the economics of this. So, the board's aware, right now, the property pays in, in taxes annually $9,332. With the solar project by state law, the applicant who would be the operator, whoever would operate this solar field would be responsible for paying $5,000 per megawatt. So, that would bring the annual total tax on this property of $45,000. And, and if the town owns, the town is going to receive the property. So, unfortunately, that would make the property come off the tax rule. So, you would lose the 9,000, but you'd be gaining the 45,000. So, although the town would own the property, the solar developer is still obligated to pay the tangible tax on the equipment, which is capped by state law at $5,000 per megawatt. So, there's a net value for the town annually of 30, of $45,000. And over the course of 25 years, the duration of the lease, it would yield the town a million, $1,125,000. And you'd still, and you, you'd get the land at the end of the lease as well. Well, you'd get the land at the beginning of the lease, but you'd get the solar developed portion at the end of the lease term. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, the, our, our experts are available for questions and discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mancini. Any questions and comments from the board now that the presentation is concluded? Just looking for the show of hands. And Mr. Keen, you're first up. Mr. Keen? Was that a mute?
Yeah. Sorry. I forgot to turn my, on mute myself. Sorry. So, I, I think the members of the board So I, I think the members of the board received this document from Mr. Kravitz this afternoon. So bear with me, because I don't think the members of the public had an opportunity to, to look at this. So I'm just going to go through it kind of quickly. So, so based on some of the material that Mr. Kravitz provided to us recently, if, if this project is not approved, and, and the landowner wanted to go ahead and build, develop the property, it, it appears that at least 26 homes could be built on the property. And according to, at one time, to Mr. Gold's engineer, 47, up to 47. And, and I don't believe it would require a planning board waiver or a zoning board special exception. And if that happens, the town is going to lose the, the forest and wildlife habitat for perpetu- perpetuity. And, and that's really my, my biggest concern here. New homes, of course, would create an increased permanent demand on, on the local aquifer that services the existing homes in the area. And new homes would also, of course, increase the demand on schoolrooms, teachers, DPW, and emergency services, and so forth. A lot of people confuse the value of wetlands because they think in terms of buildable lots. But I, I think, and that's why I asked Mr. Rabidu. I think wetlands are much more valuable than, than uplands in terms of conservation. You know, wildlife isn't going to exist without water. So our, our town ordinances created a conservation commission that explicitly states that, that to preserve, and I took this kind of out of context, but it, these words are there, explicitly to preserve our streams, shores, swamps, and marshlands. And that's what this, this project will allow us to do. The project also lies within the area designated by D E M as a forest legacy zone. I believe that map was provided to the, to the, the planning board at our workshop, when we, our last comprehensive plan workshop, where we started talking about some of the issues that we intend to discuss. If, if you combined this conservation area with the, with the conservation area proposed by Rankin Estates, the two projects would provide, provide over 320 acres of nearly contiguous, contiguous forests and wetlands for perpetuity. The, the property on the far side of Lake Bel Air that was added to the, to the proposal is only separated by, by one house lot from the Rankin Estates proposal. So I'm, I'm just looking ahead at what could be, if this is approved. The former rail beds run from the Burville Town Line, and I've stated this before and, and a couple of occasions, south to the Smithfield Town Line. If, if it's combined with the trails within the proposed conservation area that provide well over two miles of public hiking trails, that's four, four times longer than any other nature trail in, in town. And if we accommodated for a, a parallel horse trail, that would be the first equestrian trail that we have in town that would be publicly accessible. The rail beds pass near the second battle of Nipsichuk National Battlefield that was fought in 1676 during the King Philip War. The rail beds would provide easy public access right through the battleground. Now, now, of course, parts of the battlefield or the battleground on both sides of the, the rail bed are privately owned, but, and would have to do some more work to get more of the battlefield opened up. But this would be the first time that the public would have access to that battleground. The rail bed connects directly to 17 acres of conservation area on Manatee Road, that's currently owned by the, the Land Trust. It also opens the door to preserve more nearly contiguous, contiguous forests along the Douglas Pike Corridor. As, and it brings where the North Smith Field, the Land Trust property is on, on Manatee Road, that's within a half mile of, of two outlets of, of the area owned by the Audubon Society. And I believe it's in excess of 250 acres. So the, the project would preserve six historic sites, as well as make them publicly, publicly accessible for, for perpetuity. Two of the, two are historic cemeteries. We visited one on the, on the site walk. The other one is right off of Manatee Road. There are ruins of the, the enormous Augustus Fields Piggery. There's ruins of the Fields Rail Station right next to the Piggery, and the two Native American archaeological sites that were previously discussed. Right now, only the cemeteries are protected from destruction. In other words, there's nothing protecting the other sites from, from being demolished at the, you know, whim of a property or, which concerns, which concerns me. The, the project would become the largest multifunctional passive recreation area in town that would provide fishing access on two ponds, a small neighborhood beach, hiking, biking, and equestrian trails, and a huge general-purpose meadow, as well as potential picnic areas. The D E M grant to purchase the property, the Gold property, is gone. I, I, and Mr. Kravitz can, can correct me if I'm wrong. An outright purchase with a bond and without that grant, I believe would add about $250,000 a year for 10 to 15 years to the town budget. With this proposal, the town acquires the property at no cost. And that saves the bond money to buy other open space even more. If the, if the planning board denies this project, there's no guarantee that the owner is going to wait to see if a third town council will consider an outright purchase, purchase, I'm sorry. The, the town could lose a rare opportunity to acquire a significant amount of property containing significant historic features, valuable natural resources, and ready-made recreational features. And that's, that's all I'd, I'd like to put out there right now. I'll give the other board members a chance to speak. Thank you for being patient.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keen. There, before we go on, I noticed that Mr. Punchak has joined us. I'm not sure when, but I, I have noticed in the list of participants. So Tom, is there a way we can have him join us? I, I sort of feel like we're on a game show with taking a lucky participant out of the audience. Come on down and be a planning board member for a while? How, how do we have, how do we have Mr. Punchak join us?
Well, I think, I'd really toss this to Mr. Leozi. I think we have to recognize David's presence now as attending the meeting. I'm not sure, though, how that affects, you know, based on the discussion maybe he missed. How does that affect him, voting member or not now?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, two points?
Absolutely, please.
One, once Mr. Punchak appears at the meeting, he's now a voting member. And two, the applicant already agreed to extend the meeting a week, and that gives Mr. Punchak plenty of time to review the record, which is all that he's legally required to do before he exercises his right to vote.
Right, because we won't be voting. So, so we're good with that? Thank you, Mr. Leozi. So with that, Mr. Punchak, you can join us? Does he, do we need to unlock him so he can unmute if he needs to? Or is that all set?
He's unmuted, I think.
I'm unmuted, yeah. It says, I, I think that, yeah, I should be all set.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that, who, Mr. Porter, you have your hand up?
Yeah. So I'm really torn about this project because there's some good things and there's some bad things. One of the things that our goal is to do is to preserve open space for recreation. And with this development, a lot of that open space, the trails that we walked are pretty much gone. I understand the applicant is willing to extend one trail to get up to, to Tarkil Pond. But that's only just one trail. We losing quite a bit of other trails. I was one of the members that did go on the site walk, and it's really a very beautiful property. It was, you know, it was a hot day, but it was really quite enjoyable. It was pretty peaceful. And it pains me that we're going to a clear cut, however many acres are in front of us, as opposed to saying, "We have our regulations, please just stick with the 30%, six acres," or, and going with that. And it also concerns me that we would be trading the existing conservation area with a new one. While I understand that's, that's a positive, that we're, we are gaining more conservation area. That's always a good thing. But there's something about that that just doesn't sit right with me, that we overturned something that's been put into legal documentation. There was, you know, there's a lot of legalese in this conservation that, outline that Tom gave to us. But they can, they thought enough of it to conserve that portion of area for perpetu- uh, yeah, sorry, for a really long time. So that concerns me too. The, I see Mr. Keen's points about saving the historic sites. That, that's, that's great. I, I would, there's nothing more than I'd like to see is, save the historic sites that are on this piece of property. I'm just very much torn about this, this process, this project. I understand we're getting something back, but at what cost? Because as we said in previous meetings, this is going to take 80 to 100 years to get reforested. So it's not, you know, I have a four-year-old. If he grows up in town, it's going to be his grandkids that eventually see that back to open space and enjoying it. And goodness knows what's even going to be happening in the next 80 to 100 years because we've all seen what's been going on in the last four months. So that concerns me as well. My initial reaction, and I, I understand we're up against the clock, is to talk back with town council. Have a, have an idea. Go walk the property. See if you can come to an agreement with the landowner to, to just buy it outright. This, this is a big, this is a big step. This is a big deal. So to decimate it for the profit for 25, 30 years max, what does that gain us in the very long run for 80 to 100 years when we're waiting for all of this to grow back and have it become recreational open space again? It's, it's a very difficult decision because, you know, the planning board, we're very much big-picture people. We like to look at the big picture. And given that everything that's gone on in the past four months, it's, it, I question, is giving up 30 years worth it to have something potentially that might not be? I don't know. I, I'm kind of soapboxing a little bit here. But I, I'm very inclined to go back to town council, ask them, "Please reconsider this." I know Mr. Keen had stated that the, the grant money may or may not be gone. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not the money guy. But I would think that it's well enough worth just asking the question if they could revisit this. Because walking that property changed a lot in my mind. I understand we're getting a lot in the future, but it just doesn't seem worthwhile. And I'm going to go back to my previous statement that I've made at plenty of other planning board meetings. I just want to stick with our regulations. I, I think we, we put them in place for a reason, and, and I'm really just ready to, to stick with them. That's all I got.
If, if I can respond to that, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's very important. I think you have to.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was muted. Go ahead, Mr. Mancini.
Thank you, thank you. I, I, I mean, I understand Mr. Porter's comments and his concerns, but there, there's a significant thing that I think the council and the planning board has to be made aware of, and the problem with Mr. Porter's comments. The, the planning board is regulated to review regulations. You can't deny a project in hopes that you can then, the town, buy it. That's tortious interference. We have a contract with the owner. The town was a competitor in trying to buy this property. We have the property. So now you can't use this process as a means to create leverage with the property owner, deny the applicant in hopes that you can buy the property. I, I don't know if the property's for sale. I, Mr. Gold doesn't control the property. This applicant controls the property. And the applicant, and any discussions for purchasing the property would be through the applicant. But if you were to do that, there are several legal challenges you're going to face, one of which would be an inverse condemnation, and the second of which would be a tortious interference. So although you have an opportunity to review this project, you can only review it within the realm that it's being presented to you. And, and although your position allows you the opportunity to discuss policy, but that is limited to the comprehensive plan, and it's limited to the regulations.
And Mr. Mancini, I understand.
I, I didn't interrupt you, Porter. I, I just want for the, just so the record's clear. That, that's, that's all. I just, I'm just looking for a clean record. So as a planning board member, you have the opportunity to provide your input, and you have the opportunity to shape the town as you believe is appropriate. But you have to do it within the confines of the regulations. And as you hold the developer and the applicant responsible to the comprehensive plan, you also have to be responsible. You, meaning the planning board members, have to be responsible to following a certain prescribed process that's delineated by state statute and delineated within your ordinances. What we're doing is the same. We're following the process. We're permitted to seek a special use permit under your regulations if the size of the project exceeds it. And that's what we're doing. So we, we followed everything to the T. We think that this is proper planning. And what we're doing in, in return for the special use permit is to give the town all of the property, 56 acres of that now, and then the remaining 34 acres at the time of the conclusion of the solar field. And we've also added to that additional acreage. It's up to the planning board, and more, more so the zoning board, in weighing whether or not, whether or not that is within your comprehensive plan and whether or not it comports with the overall view in this, of the town. But to ask that the town council walk this property, try to buy the property from the applicant, or the, from the owner, rather, while the applicant controls it and has an application before the planning board, is, in my, in my legal opinion, you know, I'm...
Well, I think, Mr. Mancini, I think you're...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we do anything illegally. What I'm just saying is that I would have liked to see... Walking that property was very eye-opening. So I, I think that everyone knowing what we're getting into should actually be walking that property. And I understand that I was opining. I'm not suggesting that this board, town council, do anything that's against the law. So, so don't misconstrue my ability to opine to this board as suggesting we do something illegal. I clearly understand... I clearly understand that we have the ability to review the comprehensive plan, to review our zoning regulations, and that this project complies or does not comply. Currently, right now, as it stands, it does not comply because you're asking variance for the amount of lot coverage. So that, I, I want to just make that perfectly clear, that I'm not suggesting that we do anything illegal. And I want to also point out that this, this project right now, as it stands, does not comply with our zoning.
And, and, and there's a mechanism. So your zoning provides for the opportunity to speak, to seek a special use permit for a variance with regards to specific provisions of the code for solar implementation, which is what we're doing. And, and that's the process that the town has laid out. It's the process we're relying on, and the process we're implementing. And then it's our, our burden to give you the evidence that we believe substantiates why the permit should be given, and that's at the zoning board. What you're doing here at the master plan stage is you're reviewing this master plan in its conceptual stage, and you're making a recommendation to the zoning board with regards to the special use permit. You're not permitted to do anything beyond that at master plan.
We got it. Mr. Kravitz, you wanted to interject something on that?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say, and Jeff's comments conjured it up in my memory is, I did, I did, I did speak with Mr. Liuzzi about this too, is the town council might, may have a role here because they're, they are the only entity that has the executive power to kind of release this conservation easement. So I just wanted to mention that for the record and make sure that Mr. Mancini is, it's clear that depending on how the planning board votes on this, if it did get, let's say, approved with conditions, one of those conditions would have to be that there is a visit to the council, so that only the council can discharge, if you will, that, that conservation easement. So I just wanted to get that out.
Yeah, through the chair, if I may, that, that's absolutely correct. Only the town council can dispose of real estate or accept realty on behalf of the town. So
Correct.
Following the special use permit, it's our intention to petition the town council for dedication of the property, meaning that we would offer the property to the town council for their approval to accept it. And we would dedicate it to them in the form of a conservation easement with the caveat of a lease. And again, only the town council could negotiate that lease, and that would be one of the conditions of master plan that prior to our returning to preliminary, not only do we obtain the special use permit, but we also obtain the, the town council's approval for the dedication and for the lease. That, that would be the discussion between the town council, and that would be an offer of a condition that we would, we would be amenable to. We tend on doing it anyways. It's proper procedure.
Great. Thank you. I see Mr. Keen's had his hand up for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I, I, I really appreciate Mr. Porter's passion for, for conservation, because as well as the rest of the members of this, of this planning board. To me, it's, it's, it's very refreshing that, that I think we all basically think the same word, the same way in, in terms of conservation. One, one note in regards to the trails. Mr. Gold and his wife created those trails. My understanding is to ride their horses. And it's, that property has been, been posted no trespassings for as long as I can, I can remember, probably since they, they acquired it. It's, it hasn't been publicly accessible. So in the, in the sense that we're losing trails, we're losing, we're not losing anything because the, the public hasn't been accessible, hasn't had access to that, those trails. Only during the month of May, when Mr. Gold opened it up to the public, and now it's, and now it's not accessible again. So we're, we're really not losing anything. This, I, I don't think that anybody has, has argued that this property is valuable and that it would be worthy of, of the town acquiring it. I think the only issue that I can, that I can see in reading all of the minutes of the town council meetings is that was the, was the amount that, that the property would be purchased for. So, so it's, it's, it's definitely valuable. My, my thought is, is if we could suppress our, our urge for, for immediate gratification and, and acquire this, this property, the long-term benefits of this outweigh by far the, the short-term benefits. And we don't even know if, if, if Mr. Gold is, is, is not going to seek to develop the property. I mean, he's, he's, according to the material that Mr. Kravitz supplied to us, he's already had plans engineered, engineered for some sort of subdivision. I'm concerned, terribly concerned, that if, if this project isn't approved, that Mr. Gold is going to do something with it, and, and we're going to lose the opportunity to ever purchase it again at any price, and that we're going to lose that conservation area forever. With that, I'd like to, to offer some, I did some research on the comprehensive plan, like as we were trained, and I'd like to offer some of the things that I think are in the, the comprehensive plan that support a positive decision. Number 1A2, in Chapter 5, under Natural Resources, 1A2, protect existing natural environments and mitigate the impact of proposed development on the, on those environments. By, by approving this project, we are preventing development on this, even though the solar array will be on part of the property, that eventually will go away, and this entire property will be protected for perpetuity. Make, goal number two, maintain rural character in concert with, with concisely located development or redevelopment of existing areas. From the plans that, that have been discussed thus far, that's, those solar arrays are not going to be visible from any butter or from any passerby or any, any of the public ways. So this, this project would allow us to even temporarily maintain the rural character, but, but then even more so at the end of the, the 20 years, whatever the service life is of the project. Goal, Action 2B2, strive to permanently protect areas through fee simple or development rights purchase or conservation easement protections. This is exactly what this, this project proposes to do. Action 5.82, conserve and enhance forests to support water quality and forest products and so on. Again, this project does it immediately on part of the property, and then continues to do it into perpetuity for the, the entire property. On Chapter 7, on the Open Space and Recreation, Action 1B2, as part of a subdivision or land development approval, continue the option of acquiring dedicated dedication of land for recreational and open space purposes, exactly what this proposal offers. Goal, Action 1C1, develop trails, greenway plan for connecting conservation and recreation areas. Again, those, the, the trails that would, the perimeter trails through the conservation area and the rail, the rail beds provide that, the basis for real hiking paths in town, not just the short nature trails that, that we currently have. This would be a dramatic improvement. And it also opens the, the door for a continuous trail wave from Borival to Smithfield, and to me, that is such an exciting prospect. For those of you that were on the, the rail bed and on the, on the site walk, you can see that it's ready-made. Those, those beds were abandoned in the 1940s and, and have, haven't been maintained since then, and they're still in perfectly good condition. So next is Action 2A1, preserve land based on criteria, including but not limited to size, adjacent protected parcels, significant natural resources, rare and endangered species, habitat significant, or habitat significant cultural features and developmental potential. Again, spot on describing this, this proposal. Even more so, when you, when you look at, you know, whatever the board decides, I'm with the, I probably shouldn't be mentioning another application, but I want this, this significant potential to link this the, the land area and this proposal to others in the, in the future. Under Chapter 9, Historic and Cultural Resources, protect the historic and cultural resources from physical change, inappropriate character. Number, goal number four, promote and appreciation of the values, of the value of the town's historic and cultural resources. This proposal will open up the, those historic sites to public access for the first time in my lifetime. And number, Chapter 12, Energy, Natural Hazards and Climate Change, this solar projects. I, I don't think I've ever heard anybody talk badly about a, a, a project only in terms of how much forest we're, we're going to lose. I think everybody supports sustainable energy, and this project does that. So that, that would conclude this, this portion. If, if the board decides to, to approve or find a positive finding on this project, I'll, I'm prepared to offer a list of stipulations. Thanks again for your
Okay, thanks, Mr. Keen. Just one thing you said at the end there, you never, anyone talked. I'm personally a person that, that thinks that there's, the jury's not out on, on the value of forests versus the cutting them down or replacing them with solar panels myself. But anyway, I would like to, to pose a, a question to the board in the spirit of leaving no stones unturned. Doesn't necessarily require an answer. It's just something I'd like you to think about. We have seen many, many projects come to us. We had one meeting with four projects on the agenda, and all were for solar farms. So Norris Smithfield has been very attractive to people developing that. And as a result, we've seen quite a few projects, and we've wrestled with it. We've, we've done an important revision to our ordinance, and we've wrestled with this on a number of occasions, right? So I think it's important that we evaluate each project, so including this one, entirely on its own merits. And I guess the question I pose is whether what we've seen happen in a very short amount of time with a lot of solar projects coming in, and therefore a lot of forest being decimated, whether or not that has some impact on us emotionally, and, and from a conservation perspective, that could have us, that it could influence how we look at this project. And, and so that's why I, I'll reiterate that I think it's really important that we look at the merits of this project. Ordinate, including the understanding that it's a request for waiver. But if no other, you know, maybe, maybe the question is, if no other solar projects had come before us in the last year, would you feel the same way about voting positively or not, however you, you're thinking of voting? So that, that's the question I think is worth thinking about for all of us. I was, if there's any other questions or comments that any board members want to make. I see. You know, Tom, there's this feature called Raise Your Hand.
I can't find it. I, I've looked, and when you're the, I don't know, because I'm the
That's all right. As long as you're, you're raising that particular finger, I'm okay.
I, I honestly don't know if it's or whatnot, but anyway, anyway.
Turn, turn on your chat bar, and you can have the three options. If you have the chat bar or the participants, that's where you see it.
While we're at it here, just to get everything out on the table, of course, right? We're going to get this Facebook thread from Richard and from you, Gary, both of them. I think they might be in two separate pieces. That's why John didn't see the first one, but email it to Bobby tomorrow. She'll get it to the applicant. And we, we should probably post it on the webpage too, because if it's part of the legal record.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. There's an administrative function here that we've got to execute quickly, because we're going to have a next, another meeting, you know, a week from tonight, so.
Correct. And Tom, to piggyback on that, they showed us a new plan today with an additional property being added to this application. That has not been, tonight was the first time we saw that, so probably want to get that into the record as well.
Yeah, if Dave Russo could email that to Bobby, I'm off the mound. So if he could email it to Bobby, she can get it up on the web too.
Okay. Mr. Keen?
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chairman. And, and I just want to add one thing, and I'm glad you brought it up. If this was an application that, that came before us, like, like any other application, I would, I would vote it down. Personally, I would vote against it. But this one, we stand to get this property forever. And it will save that, all of this property and everything on it forever. And that is, that is why I'm a proponent for it. Otherwise, if it was like, as, as you, as you mentioned, if it was like any of the other applications, I'd definitely be, I'd definitely be against it. So that's, that's the only reason why I think this one is different, and it's so unique. And it really, I, I, I hope folks give it some good, good thought. I know they will.
Yes. Anyone else have any questions or comments? I'm inclined, given the time, to wrap it up at this point. We, we will have the meeting next week. I, I guess I'd like some clarification. If we want to open it up, if we want to reopen the public information here, would we, we would be able to do that next week, correct? Because we're continuing?
Sure.
Yeah, and I put that out there because if we choose to, I mean, there, there are people who probably like to speak, and, and it is our practice in the way this board works to include the public as much as we can and get their thoughts out. So so unless there's anything else, then I would say thank you to the applicant, and I guess we need a motion to continue?
Sure, I just want to make, just for the record, I just want to make sure that you continue it to a date certain.
Continue, absolutely, to a date certain of June 16th.
In, in a time.
Yes. So the, the motion would be to continue to a date certain of June 16th, July 16th, let me correct that, 2020, at 7:05. So, yeah.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion. So the motion is made by Mr. Porter, the second by Mr. Keen. So let's see, Mr. Four years out. So Mr. Punchak, you get to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the motion passes to continue to next week. With that, I see we have another board member with us, with Ms. Stables, sitting there on her lap, which is cool.
Oreo.
There we go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn so that Megan can go walk Oreo.
Before you do that, I see that Mr. Liuzzi has his hand up.
Wanted to remind Mr. Punchak and, and Tom that he's going to read the material before next week.
Would I be able to get the recording of this? Would, would I be able to get the recording of this meeting so that I can watch the first, uh, hour and forty-five minutes?
Yeah, I see Bobby nodding. She can probably get that to you.
She does magic. Bobby does magic with these things. He'll have it right away. All right, yeah, that would be helpful. Okay, great. Anything else, Mr. Igliozzi?
Um, the only other thing that, that was mentioned and I, and I, I can wait till next week to clarify it is, it isn't just that the town council is the one who will accept or not accept this proposal of a larger, uh, conservation easement. I'm not so sure that it was clear that only the council could grant an extinguishment of the existing easement. So just like if you were to vote positively for this project, there would be two minimum conditions. One, a special use permit required by the zoning board with your recommendation. And two, oh, an extinguishment of the existing conservation easement by the town council. And you could make a petition on that as well. That's different than going to the council and negotiating this bigger, larger conservation easement as part of a, um, opportunity for the project to go forward. I just want, because I, I got the sense that the board wasn't, maybe the board was clear on that. If they are, I apologize for taking your time. That's going to be a condition of this. You, you got, there's a, there's an existing recorded conservation easement that cannot be removed without town council approval.
Okay.
That's not a board decision.
All right, so Mr. Kravitz, you have noted that for the.
Yeah, that's, that's the way we actually mentioned it. John, John Mancini, where.
Yeah, just so the record's clear, I, I completely agree with your solicitor's comment. You know, again, the only thing we're here in front of the board for is a conditional master plan approval. Again, there, we have to obtain a special use permit from the zoning board and then approval from the town council for both the dedication of the land as well as a, a, a distinct, a, a, uh, a discharge of the existing conservation easement in return for the new conservation easement. So that, that, that would be a petition that the applicant would have to make. So we're, we're fully aware of that and we, we would propose that condition.
Okay, thank you. Um, also, um, question has, uh, Bobby, when will the recording be available and will it be available, available to the general public?
I'll make sure. It's on this machine. I'll, I'll bring it in the morning.
Just send it to me. You can do, you can do, we transfer, send it.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, so, and, and where do people go to, to access it on the website?
I don't know about the website because it's so big.
Can we pop it onto the YouTube channel with town council and school committee meetings?
We can look, uh, Bobby, maybe you can look into that. We, we would tell, the website couldn't handle anything near this. It's several hundred MB, I guess, in size, but maybe.
We could, we could totally use a YouTube channel.
Putting on YouTube.
Yeah, I, I mean, we record all these meetings. I mean, maybe it'd be best for us to have a planning board YouTube channel that falls under the Norris Smithfield umbrella.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, they don't, they don't take long to set up, so I was wondering, Bobby, would you?
I'll look into that tomorrow.
Thank you. So, and, and if we are able to do that, uh, could we? It's just, uh, what's the best way to in- inform the public that, uh, that that YouTube channel is now available?
Link it to the website.
Okay, so we could put a link in the materials, okay, as well as, uh, maybe we could get the, the administrator to include it in the next weekly, uh, the next newsletter. I think that's worth mentioning, okay? Great. So now, if there's nothing else, Mr. Igliozzi, you had your hand up, but I'm wondering if you just never took it down.
I never took it down. Sorry about that.
That's all right. That's fine. So with that, I think, Mr. Porter, you're in the middle of something that we interrupted.
Oh, I, I was just saying, you know, maybe we'll make a motion to adjourn tonight.
There you go. So we have a motion to adjourn and we have a second from Mr. Menard. Uh, our, our voters will be, yeah, Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
And Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned at nine forty PM. Thank you all very much and we'll see you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mancini.